Good evening. This is the meeting of the Gloucester School Committee. I'm calling it to order. I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful engaged lifelong learners. This meeting is recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 25 people. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. May we have a roll call of the school committee for attendance, Maria?
Kathy Clancy. Mr. Favazza.
I'm here.
Chairman Pope.
Here.
Ms. Prince.
Here.
Mayor Taken.
Here.
Ms. Watson. And Ms. Weason.
Here.
Everybody's here. We are going to now open it up for oral communications. Oral communications, the public shall have the opportunity at every regular school committee meeting to be heard under oral communications. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and the matter may be referred to the proper subcommittee. For items that are on the agenda, members of the public may address the committee with the permission of the chair. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each and shall submit a copy of their prepared communications to the recording secretary. The school committee chair shall not allow complaints as to individual performance or character. And I will now open oral communications. And if you are in attendance and would like to speak, please raise your hand. Okay, we only have 10 attendees tonight. And I'm not seeing anybody raise their hand, in which case we'll move on to comments from the chairperson. I would just like to.
You have one hand, Denise.
Okay, there we go. Denise, go right ahead. State your name and address.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, Denise Pescucci at 20 Birch Grove Heights here in Gloucester. I just have a quick question about the schematic design on the loop that has been put into this plan to alleviate the traffic issues. The question I have is, is the playground area to be closed during morning drop off and afternoon pickup?
It is closed during morning drop off, but it is open during, and by this I mean open for vehicles.
Right, so that means.
It will be open during afternoon pickup.
So the children are not allowed to use any of that playscapes or artificial turf area during those times? So it's going to be closed because of safety reasons, correct?
The one time, it's just one time, it's not those times. It's open in the morning, the loop is closed, the vehicle traffic is closed. It's open in the morning for students. In the afternoon, it's closed for the duration of pickup, which is, you know, it probably varies, and we won't know until we do it, but it's probably a half an hour or 45 minutes.
Okay, so it's going to be, it's going to be secure for all those children, that there's not going to be any worry that children are going to be going out to this play area because the road obviously has hopscotch and all kinds of other games. I'm worried about, I'm worried about the children's safety on that road because you put a road on a playground.
Right, we are too, and we.
Okay, that's, I want to put it on record that that is a major issue, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay.
Jonathan, I just want to.
Go ahead, Ben.
Add to that. You know, when you have a pickup, you know, loop there, or when you're doing, during pickup in any, in any school, and West Parish is a good example of that. I totally understand the commenter's concern, but what people need to know is that, that, the group, that, um, that line of cars is moving very slowly, is very well managed. And if kids need to cross, because there was, you know, a crossing area there, they're also well staffed, as anyone who's been through the West Parish line would know. And so we'll be able to, the veterans, East Gloucester one will be well staffed, will be well managed. Those cars will be moving slowly, and if students need to cross, they'll be able to cross with adult supervision to that place. So just for folks, people shouldn't have the notion that it's a, it's like, it's like a road or a street with cars passing at those speeds. They are, you know, bumper to bumper, well managed, well organized, and we're moving slowly for the safety of the kids and all around, whether they're on the sidewalk or they're in the play area, that sort of thing. So, but safety is the ultimate concern there.
Yes. The, I would just add that it's designed so there is no real reason why students would need to cross the pickup line. The, you know, there's access to the street, there's access, and they wait in line. They don't, you know, run across the line of cars to get in their mother's car that's, you know, way back in the line. They have to wait with, under the supervision of their teachers until the parents pull in and then they load up. So it's, I can't, I don't know what the situation would be where there would be any reason for them to have to cross the line of traffic. We have two more people. Cynthia Carney.
Thank you, Jonathan. School committee superintendent Lummis. I am truly worried about my colleagues, the students, and the families of Gloucester and our community members. Last week, students started school in our school buildings, and we have not yet received reports on the HVAC systems and air quality of our schools, a report that we requested over two months ago. The superintendent presented data about the quality and condition of our HVAC units and unit vents in the veterans and East Gloucester elementary schools. The report stated that the units are well beyond their life expectancy and need to be replaced. This is the same report that the GTA was ridiculed for citing. Yet we hear time and time again that our schools are safe enough to hold hundreds of people in during a pandemic of a deadly virus. Again, the school committee is changing the narrative to suit their needs. We have discussed working collaboratively to make six feet of distance among students of priority among all of our schools, a practice that is instituted across the country and all public space. Yet we now have students in schools. Many students are still at only three feet of distancing. We are understaffed, and there are still astronomical class sizes in the elementary remote academy. We have teachers who are working 100% outside of their certification, and paras who are taking over teaching positions when there are certified teachers available to be transferred into those positions, a practice that many districts around the state are adopting. Additionally, positions have not been posted through the proper channel set forth in our CBA. During negotiations, it was stated that there was some PPE stored in the preschool's multipurpose room that it would be removed. However, we understand that it is far more than PPE and that there are no intentions of removing it. Furthermore, we know for a fact that their needed equipment will not be in place until at least late October or later, yet they are also back at school. And through conversations surrounding the phased-in approach from a hybrid to remote learning plan voted on by the school committee, the superintendent had stated that it is not if, but when we have to phase into a remote model. The only reason this would occur is if something happened to increase our number of COVID-19 cases in Gloucester, something that is much more likely, given the model that we are using, and something I truly hope will not happen. To be clear, the phased-in from remote to hybrid and eventually in-person approach to learning that was proposed by the GTA was based on the safety of the community and in keeping with maintaining low COVID numbers, and our stance is still the same. Yet even the most recent counter proposals by the school committee have struck out our entire health and safety protocols in the same way that they struck out our entire learning model. I ask the people of Gloucester, what approach is based on the premise to ensure the community's health and safety? Thank you. I wanted to clarify the union's position. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mary Ann Boucher.
Hi, good evening. I would like to, Mary Ann Boucher, 93 Mount Pleasant Avenue. I'd like to really direct this to.
I'm sorry, Mary Ann.
Hello.
Yep, we lost you for a second, I'm sorry.
Mary Ann Boucher, 93 Mount Pleasant Avenue. I'd like to really direct this to Mr. Lummis. First of all, welcome to Gloucester. Thank you for your endless amount of work thus far. As you know, I've attended every meeting I possibly can. I am a lifelong native of Gloucester. I am 61 years old next week. I've lived next to the East Gloucester Elementary School for my entire life. I've watched children enter and exit on a daily basis, five days a week for 60, well, as many years as I can remember. I'd like to echo what Denise Pescucci said. I know while everybody states and wants and hopes that there is safety, there are, you have painted hopscotch on a road. Children, I've watched three children be hit by cars at East Gloucester School, not in recent years, but I've seen it. Children go in all directions, parents go in all directions. Parents are not going to want to get in that queue and wait for 40 minutes. They don't like it at West Parish, and they don't, and they're not going to like it here. I'm asking you to rethink the way you want to put this loop around a place structure. Whether people vote yes or they vote no, I'm asking you to please look at this and rethink the way that this loop is being presented. I care about the safety of the children more than I care about where the school is going. Please, please, make it safe for these kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Who would like to speak? We're up to 28 attendees at this point, and we'll move on. I would just like to remind the members of the school committee that the best way to be recognized during deliberations or during questions is to use the raise hand button. That, because I can't, sometimes I can't see everybody, and, and just butting in is impolite and causes a little bit of chaos that we don't need amidst all of the chaos that we are dealing with. So, that being said, do we have any recognitions? All right, Laura.
Thank you. I just want to recognize, you know, again, a week into the school year, all the work that the teachers and the paras and the administrators have done. It's really quite, it's quite heartwarming to see everyone greeting children at the beginning of a day, and I just really want to recognize and thank everyone again for all the hard work that's gone into making that happen.
I'm sure we all agree with that, Laura, and thank you for saying it. Melissa.
Thank you. I just want to recognize the vote of the city council last night and thank all the members that voted in favor for the loan authorization. For those who may not be aware, and I wasn't aware until halfway through the discussions, the city council approved a loan order in the amount of $4.2 million to assist in relocating Mado's field, or the field located on Mado playground, and money to tear down the two buildings. So it was a good step in the direction in preparing for a new school. So I just want to say kudos to them because they took the information that was provided at a joint meeting by Mike Hale and John Dunn very seriously. So it was, it was good to hear, hear the vote in action and get a positive result. So I just want to thank them for their effort.
Thank you. I, once again, I think we all agree with that. Any other recognitions? Moving on, we'll go to the consent agenda. Are there any items that any committee person would like to remove from the consent agenda for further discussion? Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Sorry, yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yeah.
Mayor Taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
And Ms. Weason.
Yes.
It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to our deliberations on educational issues, and I will turn it over to Superintendent Lummis.
Okay, good evening, folks. I'm going to, um, we will, I promise you, move to more regular reporting from me on, you know, a sort of typical superintendent's report as soon as we have regular meetings, they're every week. But up until that moment, you'll be getting a presentation from me that is, it is sort of acts as a superintendent's report. In this case, as you know, the superintendent's report has primarily been on getting school up and running. So we'll continue that tonight for at least, at least this one more week. But, you know, things will change, so we'll give you an update on a few things. First, as we have said from the beginning, I told all folks a lot of times, our primary objective for this fall and this summer has been the safer turn of as many students as possible to in-person school settings to maximize learning, to address our students' full needs and support community and family needs. And we have done that, we're doing that, we will continue to get more students in school, as I'll describe as part of my update here tonight. But, um, it's going very well. There are, there are bumps, there are challenges, there are in any normal school day or school week. And, but we'll talk about those too some. So again, we are continuing to maintain following health and safety protocols that are put out by DESI and all the public health officials, the management of the public health department, and many other public health experts that they're working with, of course, and also working closely with the Gloucester Health Department. It's a quick community health update. There remain, I mean Gloucester, so actually let me back up a little bit here. The theme for tonight and the theme ongoing is keep it up Gloucester, keep, keep us in. We are doing, the community can, can use, do a fantastic job of taking care of each other, taking care of our families, and minimizing COVID in our community. And as everyone knows, if you don't have COVID in your community, we can't get COVID in our schools. But we have to remain vigilant, but it is, it is a system-wide, a school-community-wide, a city-wide effort. If you want to keep our students in school, we've got to keep up the great work that we've been doing for months and months. So part of that news, part of that, that good news is that we maintained fewer than five active cases as of yesterday, reported by Department of Health. The statewide positivity rate is very, very good, it still remains at 0.8%. And that's the lowest it has been since the start of COVID, it's a statewide number. Last week, we rated green on the state map, which is about new cases per 100,000 students. At some point during these meetings, somebody texts me or emails me and tells me that the new map is out. Or, or, yeah, and so something that'll probably happen again. The wastewater testing, that's released on Friday, so last Friday, the virus was not detected in the wastewater. So that is, you know, supports the very low incidence of COVID right now in the community, which is all, all great news. As I continue to say, community transmission and the various factors that go in, the data that goes into understanding community transmission will, is how we've been gauging whether or not we should be in school, and that is how we'll gauge whether or not we should stay in school. The other piece on that is if we have specific incidents in a school or in a, or in classrooms. So we can, we can do it on three levels. We can close the classrooms down, close a school down, or close a, you know, the whole system down. But we're not, we're nowhere near that. I'm just helping people understand about how we're looking at this. And that, all those decisions will be, you know, all that information will be sharing with, or will be getting rather, from the Department of Public Health here in Gloucester. So still, we'll work with them very, very closely. In terms, I'm not showing the map today, tonight, because, the statewide map, because we don't have the new version of it. But I do want to remind everybody that that is one single point of data. As I just mentioned, any adjustments to the learning model will be based on the variety of pieces of data that help make up our understanding of community-wide transmission. So that's positivity, that's recent cases, that's where those recent cases are happening, how widespread they are, that's new, new cases, that's, you know, community spread. I'll give you one instance on that, one example is, it's potential, it's possible, as we have had in other communities and even here, that you could have a number of cases combined to one facility or one workplace, that sort of thing. And if that, if that isn't impacting our school families in a significant way, there may be more cases happening in Gloucester, but not ones that are affecting our schools. And we will work very closely to understand any new numbers as we go forward. You know, we're closely with the Department of Health to understand that. But that's a long way of saying that, that one measure that the map shows us isn't the one all, you know, be all of data. It's an important metric, but it's only one that'll make up the work we do to figure out if we have to make any changes on, on models. So let me give you an update on a variety of things, like of course, school opened on September 16th. We have all our elementary school students in, our middle school students in O'Malley. And I'll talk about GHS and how we're moving towards October 13th. We already have a bunch of students learning at GHS, and we will add more as we go along. So health check and health protocols, just quickly, school opened on September 16th, one week ago today. We have now had two Wednesdays of school, which is kind of a good benchmark. Preschool and in-person started just this past Monday for all students, so that's up and operational. K-5 in-person started a week ago, five, four-hour days, and finished remotely each day. O'Malley, their full and hybrid is operational, so that's for, every student in, four days, for just more than four and a half hours, and then also finishing remotely. And then GHS, I'll go more into deal, more into detail about this later, but they started with the remote sort of plus cohorts, students, some students are learning in person, and then they also have their, the other students learning remotely, we'll talk about that more. And then Remote Academy, pre-K to eight, launched on the first day, has been operational, I'll give you an update on that as well. So I do want to just stop for a moment and acknowledge the incredible work of our school nurses and the school nurse team led by Jeff Parko. The school nurses, every single day, are working with students, understanding if they have symptoms, reporting, you know, talking to their families, sometimes sending kids home. What's challenging here is the symptoms for COVID-19 are similar to other sort of run-of-the-mill illnesses. You know, a common cold, for example, or allergies. So that requires our school nurses to work very closely with families. If students have symptoms that are similar to COVID-19, even if they are similar to allergies or a common cold, students are asked to go home, and then they have to, and our nurses work with the families to find out about those symptoms, find out about doctor visits. They provide them with clear instructions on what to do in terms of doctor visits and what to find out. They are going, they are tracking in detail, students, any students have symptoms, who they have to follow up with, any timelines they have, any tests they have to get. Doing just a fantastic job of communicating with families, keeping track of our students, and making sure folks are following the protocols and being healthy. They are answering lots of questions from teachers and from principals, also from families, and even the occasional one from the superintendent. I had the pleasure of meeting with the whole group today. They have daily meetings in the afternoon, the whole nurse team gets on a Zoom call and goes through what they learned that day, what they did this day, what's coming up. And they're, you know, sharing information, but also learning from each other. And I was, they're able to understand their tracking in a more detailed way, how they follow up, and just ask some questions of my own. So just, they're doing a great job, a really, really great job. They're experienced with this, most of them have been working with the Department of Health all summer. So they know about what to do, they know about close contacts, they know about contact tracing. If there is a case, or a student is a close contact of someone who's tested positive, and this has not happened yet in our schools, okay? So I want to be clear about that, it's not happened yet. But if there is a case in our school, or if a student is a close contact of someone who tested positive, the nurses then contact the Department of Health, and the Department of Health assigns an epidemiologist to work with us on each case, okay? We follow very directly the protocols for determining close contacts, okay? This is not up to how someone feels or their sense of who might, of what a close contact is. It is the six feet or closer for 15 minutes or more, okay? And we have, we are following that statewide protocol in terms of identifying close contacts. It's the same protocol that the Department of Health has been operating under. We communicate with families of any close, we would communicate with families of any close contact by phone and also in writing. We share those close contacts' names with the Department of Health, so, because then they take up the follow-up, take on the follow-up, and then we operate from there under the direction of the Department of Health. So you also have clear protocols that are, you know, publicly available and shared on our website about what happens if your child gets tested, tests positive or has symptoms on, at school or at home, what a staff member would do as well if they have symptoms. The nurses are well-versed in those, and they're able to share them, share them as necessary. We are continuing to adjust practices and messaging, so communication with families is really, really important on this. It isn't always easy. But we're communicating about symptoms and why families may need to keep students home if they have any of those symptoms, even though they may not want to or may not see the need, really, really important. You know, part of keeping us in is that families are responsible and staff are responsible in staying home if they feel sick. We talk to and work with families about what to do if we send, if we send a child home with symptoms and what they need to do. We talk to them about what they need to do before coming back to school. We're translating our protocols and using translation services where needed. We're making sure, also making sure and working, continue, we will continue to work with school secretaries, homeroom teachers and first period teachers about, you know, who to look out for as they come back into school. And then we have to continue to message from the principal, myself, and teachers. So those things are, you know, works in progress that we're, we're doing and developing and honing. And we always, we're also changing the way, we, we always ask families to call us if their child's absent, but really now it's very, very important they do. So we will continue to urge families, whenever they're absent, to tell us, to call us and tell us why, or respond to our phone calls. If they're traveling to a safe state, that's fine, but if they're out with symptoms of any sort, we want to know what they are so we can help them and help make sure we keep our folks safe. And then we'll be adjusting our attendance practices, especially at the high school. The high schools, you may know, you know, has consequences that can affect grades and completion and credit if students don't attend, but we want to moderate those because we certainly don't want to encourage students to come in when they're sick. I'll keep going, a few, a few more slides here. Chromebook distribution, this is on schedule and on time. We reported that grade three to five Chromebooks would be in last week, and they were, which is great, and also means we're doing a lot better than many other districts. Those are being prepped for distribution next week, also on time. Students are assigned a specific Chromebook that's, you know, tagged to them, and distribution will happen at each school, so it won't happen centrally, it'll happen in each school. And those are folks who are in the hybrid, those are the folks, the grade three through five, who are coming into the school for their hybrid model, so it'll be easy to pick it up at school. All the Chromebooks for K to eight remote learning were distributed last week. A small number of students in the Remote Learning Academy did not take Chromebooks, and that's because we believe they are using a family device. If anybody was having trouble getting on, we've been working with them, we've been communicating with them. We do, we are aware of a few, a few families that are having internet access problems. We do, we are aware of a few, a few families that are having internet access problems, more a bad connection rather than no connection. And we have twenty five hotspots on order for, which is actually more than we we need at this point, but we have the ability to get more if necessary. Remote Learning Academy development. So, uh, Remote Learning Academy enrollment steady, there've been a limited number of students who've asked to switch the hybrid model, they want to go back into school. We still definitely have large class sizes across the K to five. Not six to eight as much, but definitely K to five, we are aware of that, working on it every single day. It's, I'd say, one of the biggest challenges we have is fully staffing that. Classroom teachers are being supported in a variety of ways by special education teachers who are assigned to Remote Academy, paraprofessionals. Reading and math coaches who are supporting Remote Academy and an EL teacher. So all those staff, except for the reading and math coaches, are dedicated to Remote Learning Academy, that's the work they are doing as well as the classroom teachers. But we still need to add more staff and reduce class size, that is an A number one priority. It's proving difficult, but we have some other, we're working on some other approaches on it. We are targeting October thirteenth as a possible day for our students who switch back in into the hybrid. However, we are being, we will be very challenged with that, it would be a space available basis. And we have very limited space in our schools and because of the distancing that we're, that where we are right now. And so we are hoping that not many students will will want to switch into into the in person. Because we're improving our staffing there, but also we really do have, the in person enrollment is. All is maxed out in some grades and is getting close to being maxed out across all grades, so that's, that's very tight. We still obviously have in person students registering like we always do in the beginning of school year. And we have to accept those students, obviously. But we are trying to be pretty creative in where we place them. So that's, that's, that's some of our two biggest challenges here is. Getting the Remote Learning Academy to fully staff, so we reduce the class sizes. And then the enrollment challenges in terms of just fitting kids in. Because as you know, our, essentially our class sizes are limited by space and therefore our schools essentially have a smaller capacity than they've ever had, so. Let me stop there before going into Gloucester High School and a few other things, just see if there's some questions.
Melissa has a question.
Thank you, Ben, you just said that we're almost at capacity with space. And students are still registering, are we accepting school choice students from other school districts right now?
No, we've shut that down, we shut that down during the summertime. We just, we don't have capacity, and we've got to prioritize our our resident students, definitely.
Okay, and when you say we don't have capacity, we don't have capacity doing the three foot decked in? Or we don't have capacity because we're trying to get to six feet?
We're trying to maintain as much space as we can, so it's different in different classrooms, right? But we don't want, want to go down to three feet in all classrooms at all. We want to stick where we are, that may mean we go from six to five perhaps, or maybe six to four perhaps, but. But, you know, we are really in a bind here of, you know, people show up at a doorstep, we are obligated, you know, morally and legally to accept them into our schools. At the same time, if they want to, if they want to go in person, we want them to be there, if they want to go remote. We'll place them there, but we're hesitant because the class size is there, so we are definitely in a, this is a challenge, you know? So far, you know, we're, we're, we're replacing them well, it's working out, but it's, it's not easy, you know, it's not easy at all.
And are we looking at, if a student wants to return and say they're in the Beaman School District? But yet the class is large there, are we suggesting to a parent that they could go to a different school where there's a smaller class in the same grade?
Yeah, so we haven't moved anybody back, the only people we move back from Remote Learning Academy right now to in person are high need students. We have to prioritize their in in person learning, okay, so they make a request, we'll place them, so, you know. So we haven't, we haven't had to do that, we are definitely considering it because there will be classrooms that are, you know, at capacity. So that may be possible, we are then, you know, have to be, we're obligated to then provide transportation, so that gets tricky as well, so. That's part of this balancing act, which is very, very hard, but we haven't done that yet, but we may have to consider it, yes.
Thank you.
I don't see any other questions, Ben, you want to continue?
Sure, so let's go to the high school. So a couple of important things here, both right now, remote engagement centers are fully operational, the cafeteria and the library. Those are supporting drop, so remember, right now, the high school is fully remote, except for, you know, certain learners. That we want to have in person, either because they're high needs learners, learners or the work they do, like career evoke, evoke, evoke and tech education. Really needs to be done in person, so those are the folks we have in person. We also have the Remote Engagement Centers operational, and those are in the cafeteria and library, and those are supporting both drop in students. So students who are doing fully remote but want a a place to to be that serves them well, to do their remote learning in. And also there was a remote engagement centers are also supporting the students who are in person, so when they do their remote. A number of them are coming to the the library or cafeteria to do their remote learning at the high school as opposed to another site or home or somewhere else, so. Our career evoke and tech ed students are in person completely, about, that's about a hundred students. They're depending their level, they're learning in person between one and three blocks a day. And when they finish their in person, then they're either going home to do their remote learning, or as I said. They're doing one of their remote engagement centers at the high school to complete their remote learning, their their school day remotely. Our anchor, life skills and transition programs are also in learning in person. Our level one and two English learners are in person as well for their ESL class, math and social studies classes. And then they do remote learning for the rest of their school day. A number of them are also go, also then using the Remote Engagement Centers as well, or they can go home and finish, finish their, whatever's best for them. We are definitely hearing reports, at this point for me it's anecdotal, but I'm sure other folks are hearing quite a bit more. That remote learning at the high school is stronger and definitely more robust in the springtime. Teachers are more well versed in technology and the tools and how to structure classes. There's better organization in terms of if a child or doesn't, or student doesn't know, know where to go. There's a master schedule that anybody can help them find the the Zoom class they're supposed to be in. We are definitely seeing, unlike, you know, the springtime was not a full day of remote, of remote learning, now it is. Definitely seeing how that can be taxing, you know, it's hard to know right now if that's because folks are getting their sea legs and just, you know, getting the stamina. Always in the beginning of the year, students have to, you know, need to rebuild their stamina for a full school day. That might be part of what's going on here, also, we do know that they are on screens for a long time. And that can be, as we all know, because we've done it, that can be, that can be tiring. Because of that, folks are learning to use the homeroom, e-block or longer lunch block. To make sure kids are off screens, that they're having some active movement, they're having a break time, that sort of stuff. And that's sort of one of the things we're sort of adjusting on the fly here as we continue to learn. And then moving forward with the high school, getting ready for hybrid. This, continue to hire staff and moving some staff to the Remote, Remote Academy. This is a big lift, this is, again, hiring right now is proving difficult, we are making progress bit by bit. But it's not easy. We are moving orientations to, they're set for the week of October fifth. We were originally thinking they could be happening next week, but by having to October fifth, it's helping in two ways. One, because it's a dry run for how the, how the the split day will work. If that's happening then closer to when they come back into school, so that helps them, you know, really do a dry run practice, just, you know, just prior to them coming back into school. It also gives the high school a little bit more time for staffing preparation cohorting too, which we think is a positive as well. So they'll be ready, really ready to go by the time that week comes along. The other challenge is, you remember, you know, it was staffing, scheduling and then cohorts. All the classes, every class is divided into into two cohorts now. They know, you know, each person, each each student is in each, each either crimson or cream for every class. And that now allows them to make some adjustments if they need to, if, for example, you have a, say, you have a math class that has, you know. Say, you know, nineteen Crimson cohort students and four cream cohort students. You may be able to make some adjustments, but they, they know that now in terms of. You know, how many students are each class, in each cohort, and they're able to make some adjustments if necessary, so that's sort of. That's all going according to schedule. The staffing continues to be challenged, like I said, we are making progress there. At this point, yeah, seem to be moving right along. We paused there about the high school, any questions about the high school right now, before I'm, then I'm going to go into facilities?
Samantha.
Thanks, Jonathan. I have heard really positive feedback from parents about the difference between spring and this fall at the high school, so kudos to the staff there. And Ben, I'm just curious, how are you getting the word out for the Remote Engagement Center to students who might need it?
Sure, James is with us tonight because he's going to be talking about the handbook, so James, if you could help us with that, because you're doing most of that much more than I am.
Sure, yeah, thanks for the question. So we've reached out to to all families about the Remote Engagement Center. And, but as we all know with the kind of broadcast communication that we do sometimes, that it takes a more individual. Communication to students, so some of the students who have come in more recently are down to. Teachers who, you know, find out about a particular student and ask if the, you know. The Remote Engagement Center might be beneficial to them and help them through the day, that's helped with several English learners. It's helped with some other students who have some distractions at home or just a, you know, wifi that's a little bit, you know, unreliable. That, as those things happen, a couple of students where the kid initially really didn't want to. Come into the school for the Remote Engagement Center, but. The, the, the parent and with some feedback from the teachers have prevailed upon them that it's best that they do engage there. So starting with broadcast communication and that's been on, you know, several times a week, I'm, you know, reaching out to families, but then. Really, a lot of the changes come from more focused communication from teachers for individual student situations.
Thank you, James, and how is it staffed, who's, who's in the room with the students?
So we have our Rory Gentile, who is our positive. Alternative Consequences and Education teacher who, you know, we don't have students in in that program right now. So he's overseeing one of the spaces. With support from an in-house substitute and an assistant from the library. To make sure we can cover everybody's breaks and that kind of thing, and then in the library, we have our head librarian Samantha Texera and the. Morphine of the library support professional up in the library staffing those areas. And there's good communication from, you know, some, if we find out a kid was in the Remote Engagement Center, but maybe. Had trouble getting into a meet, there's good communication to those staff members to, you know, so we can help intervene with kids. We've been able to, you know, use this as a tool to provide some Chromebook, you know, loners and in getting things fixed. You know, helping students make sure they can get into classes and all that kind of thing, so that's how we're staffing it, the kind of support kids can get there.
Melissa.
Thank you, I'm the same question line as Sam was, I just wanted to, can you tell us how many students have been showing up for this program? Like, and on a typical day, how many kids are, high school kids are in that? Using those, using the facility?
So Ben had had mentioned earlier how one of the uses for the vocational students in their blocks, they're not. Program. So, so that's, that's one group, but but we're, for the kids who aren't in that program. There are about, about fifteen students who are accessing the Remote Academy on any given day. Some students tried it out at the beginning and then, you know, decided to go back home and and use, use it there. And then there are, like I say, the, particularly the freshmen in the vocational program have, you know, they tend not to have their own transportation and that kind of thing, so. So in addition to the the students who are using it. Just to be remote, there are the, particularly the freshman students. Using it for, who are in the vocational program, year one students are using it as well.
And Jay, do you think the ones that were doing it that went home, are they going home, do you think, because of bandwidth issues, or it's just more convenient for them to go home?
I, I think it's more convenient to be home, I mean, one of, it's, it, the environment, it is, you know, nice to be home sometimes, right? And have, get out, get outside to your yard, I mean, it is, one of the things we are finding is encouraging kids in between classes and during the homeroom time to get up and stretch and. And go for a little walk before you jump back in, you know, we, I think this group here knows very well what it's like to be online for a long period of time and. So sometimes being at home to do that is is helpful, but we do get our kids who are in the Remote Academy for both sessions. We do get them out for the in between part as well, so they can get up, move around. During the the break that we have in between the two sessions. So I think it's going, it's going pretty well and it's been a good option, again, it keeps evolving as, you know, a parent finds that it's not working for them, the student's not able to focus maybe at home. And they come in and, and that, that becomes, you know, a solution to that problem.
Right, thank you, Jay.
Any more questions? Okay, seeing none, Ben, would you like to continue?
Great, so we'll go to facilities, so. So the indoor environmental quality testing, you know, that's air and also, you know, actually I've described what it is, was completed last week, so all school, all elementary were done. The week before last week, and then, sorry, West Parish, O'Malley and, and, sorry. And the high school were done, were done last week, so to, and two, they did two things, they did an indoor environmental profile. And indoor environmental monitoring, so. And the indoor environmental profile, it says here is a visual assessment of occupied areas that have identified sources or conditions that could negatively impact. Indoor environmental, environmental quality, I'll talk about that in a moment and give you some examples. Indoor environmental monitoring is what we've been, we've been talking about in terms of air, air quality monitoring. So that you can see the measurements of carbon monoxide, temperature, humidity, airborne particles. Volatile organic compounds, and across the buildings, they monitor those in three hundred and fifty locations. So, so that's been done today, this afternoon, we received a summary letter. From the folks Environmental Health and Engineering. And I've just included some excerpts, it's a short letter, I've shared it with the school committee, we can post it on our website. So first is that the EH and E's assessment indicate acceptable IEQ, sorry, IEQ is. Indoor environmental quality condition, so that's both air quality but other environmental conditions. So they indicate they're acceptable based on their observations and monitor results, okay? The most monitored results were within health-based exposure standards and consistent with conditions expected in similar school environments. I haven't been able to ask any questions about this yet, in terms of what exposure standards they're looking at or using, we'll find that out. Excuse me. Also quoting from this, this sort of summary letter. Locations inspected in the buildings appeared well maintained, typical many school environments and no widespread sources or conditions considered likely to adversely affect. Indoor environmental quality were identified, okay? They did identify a few localized cleanliness issues in some buildings, those are things like water stained ceiling tiles, and this is what I mean in terms of when I talk about. The environmental profile review and assessment, so these are things that, you know, obviously beyond air quality, that could be signs of issues in the building. Limited visible mold growth, dust accumulation, okay, that's, that's associated with some mechanical ventilation systems. And importantly, they say although not considered unusual, not widespread. So let me repeat that, although not considered unusual and not widespread, these issues were communicated DPW and should be addressed. So in speaking to Mike Hale, while they were doing these inspections, so, you know, two weeks ago and last week. He was very clear to me that when they identified any issues, like say water stained ceiling tiles. That same day, they communicated that to the DPW or dust accumulation, so, and then DPW would address those or fix them, be it ceiling tiles. You know, if they said, if they saw, if there's any mold associated with that, they take care of that, so those things were dealt with and addressed as this was going on. And then also just this last quote, that the full explanation of methods, findings and recommendations will be included in our final report. I don't know yet exactly when the final report will be, will, will happen. I think they want, they know that there is urgency here, so they wanted to get us sort of just the the top line summary there. Yeah, so just those, those two slides to give you that, and also, as I mentioned, school members have that email for me as well, which I got from Mike, Mike Hale this afternoon. And, and we will, as we get the more explanation of the methods, more explanation of the findings, you know, the exact data. as I've said from the beginning, we will post those, make them publicly available. You'll have them. We want to make sure that people know that we're being, you know, just sharing everything we have with people. So I guess pause for questions there if I can answer them.
Samantha.
Thank you. So Ben, will this letter, while we wait for the report, be shared with the GTA or with teachers?
Yeah, we'll share on our website. We'll give it directly to the GTA, absolutely, you know, because we're negotiating them tomorrow and they should certainly see it. And also I can address some of the concerns that Cynthia raised tonight as well. You know, and so, yeah, but that'll be part of negotiations tomorrow, yes.
Laura. Laura.
Um, so I just wanted to ask, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. I just wanted to ask, yeah, I hope so. My, my, can you hear me again? No?
I can still hear you. Yes, we can say we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. We had talked about at the meeting with Mike Hale a few weeks ago about receiving information every week about what was happening and what had been done. Are you receiving those? And do we, do we, do we know the schedule for all the work that's being done?
Yeah, so I didn't receive one last week. Partly, I think that was because as we opened schools, things were a little frantic. I was communicating with him today and we'll follow up with him on Friday to get more specific details about timeline about. He did, sorry, he did give me information today about the numbers of the ionization units that they've identified will be needed. Okay, I think I they originally expect about 210. I think they're in need about 204, so a few less than than they thought originally. So we do have an update on that. But yeah, I expect to get, and I'll work with him to get, you know, full update on timeline on what's been done, what still needs to be done on Friday. Yes.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Ben, would you like to continue?
Just a couple more updates here. Really two. So just an update on the community stakeholders group. This is a group of folks, so folks who've been, you know, represented, parent representatives from the schools. I think school council chairs for the most part is what we had. And then also from community agencies, I will not remember all of them. But folks from Y, from Pathways, from Wellspring, from the Food Pantry, from GEF, a bunch of others. I'm sorry for those who I cannot remember right now. But it's been a great group being just about weekly since the summertime. We've been focusing on three areas, sort of problem solving, after-school opportunities, also gauging what the need is out there. Pathways and the Y have been working very, very hard to provide after-school opportunities in their own centers. We are not able at this point because we are using almost all our space in the buildings to do after-school on-site. Also because, as I mentioned before, the complexity around still having students in the building, even though most school, most students have left the K-5, you know, at noon or 12:45. So there's just essentially, there's no space in our buildings to provide this. We are using gym, we're using gym and the cafeteria, the same thing typically. But they are working very hard. Pathways has after-school up and running in their in their center. The YMCA is working diligently to get that as well, to offer to our students. They would have groups that are by school. Okay, that's what they're working on right now. So you have a small cohort of students from one school that would stick together. You will not be having cohorts of groups of students across schools. That's the way they can staff it. They were also working, we were communicating with Karen Carroll about that as well. And she gave them some good guidance on how to maintain and be and really operationalize that. And that's they're still working and getting it up and going. The other area that the group was working on was about identifying community resources. And so we launched a community need survey a few weeks back for to ask all of our school families about the sort of needs that they thought they they had. I can give you more fuller, I can give you a fuller update on that data next meeting, if you like. The stake, from the results of that survey, the stakeholder group and all the different partners in that identified a bunch of different resources that would be helpful for families. We've added those to our resources webpage and the Back Together GPS site. And then also families would have the option to say if they want a direct follow-up on certain issues. And so those who did, we passed there and we we got permission for them to pass their names along or contact information along to different agencies. And those agencies are able to follow up directly with those families. So if you, you know, wanted employment support, one group would reach out to you. If you wanted food support, open door, reach out to you as well and that sort of thing. After-school, Pathways can reach out to you or the Y can reach out to you. But we connected those who those families who wanted direct follow-up with our partners. And the last piece, very important, is Remote Learning Engagement Centers. So if you think of what James was talking about in terms of what's happening at the high school and also the middle school too. But how do we have those sorts of remote learning pods or centers that students can engage, can can go to and spend the afternoon at during the hybrid day or when we go, you know, fully remote? If that's a better space for them than being at home, either because the internet's better or it's, you know, it's quieter or it's supervised. And so we were working with GEF and others to identify the funding for that and then launch it. And we will need park community partners on that. Want to follow up definitely with the mayor and the city side to see about possibilities in in terms of support for that. But we're we're now sort of, we will advertise for a part-time coordinator that would be grant-funded because we need someone who can really operationalize that, manage it, reach out to potential partners who could provide space. But that's, that's, you know, in the beginning stages here as we work with GEF to get it off the ground. And then the last one, I see that a hand up, but I want to just.
Yeah, okay.
One last thing, which is about food services. As I hope everyone knows, and we've been communicating both through Facebook and also emails, is our free grab and go, our grab and go lunch and breakfast are free to all families through December 31st, hopefully beyond. But right now, we know that. Monday, we distributed about 700 breakfasts and 818 lunches. Sorry, Tuesday, that isn't, it wasn't just 83 lunches. I'm sorry about that. Tuesday was was 730 breakfasts and 873 lunches, not 83 lunches. So then that's, that's, you know, up from last week. So, you know, we're an upward trend here as we continue to get the word out. And also people get familiar and sign up for the ordering system, which is online. Last year, as a just a comparison, we were serving about 45% of our students lunch. And then, and so far this year, it's only 30%, which is, you know, the high school isn't operational yet fully. So, you know, that'll increase when the high school in person or hybrid, I should say. Interestingly, last year, 13% of students were ordering breakfast and this year it's 24%. So that's up quite a bit. We expect that to probably increase even further. One more piece, we've already working with the open door. So students who are learning fully remote can still get access or if we go remote fully, students can still get access through the open door. We are preparing those meals, delivering them to the open door. But then it's a, it's a, it's a place where families, because it might be easier for them, can pick those up from the open door. If especially if they're learning fully remotely and that's an easier place for them. So that's all in terms of the update. Happy to answer questions about food services or the stakeholders group. And also, yeah.
Kathy.
So I have two questions. I assume there's a pickup location at the high school for the students that order the lunch at the high school?
I believe so. That would make sense because I know they're making lots of meals at the high school. So yes, I believe that's true.
Yes. I can confirm, yes.
Okay, great. And my second question has to do with the Y program. Is the thought that buses would transport the kids?
Yep.
To those programs?
Sure, great question. The Y is working on transportation themselves. And then they're also working with Adam Mayo to see if if we can also help out with that, which is the, which is the way we do it with Pathways as well. Some of that is our buses, some of this with Pathways buses. So that's still in process. Yeah.
Thank you.
Laura.
Um, on the lunches, just to, because we do have some people watching, I just want to be perfectly clear. I know there's a lot of information going out, but it's really a goal to have as many. By ordering a lunch, if you don't need one, you are not taking it from someone who does. Is that correct?
That's true. That's absolutely true. We're reimbursed for all lunches we serve. And so we do want to get, you know, make sure that, and we'll keep communicating every week on that, you know. We need principals also to communicate that. Teachers can communicate that as well and their sort of, you know, family newsletters if they have them. So, you know, but that's absolutely right. We are able to make lunches for anybody who needs them at this point. And they're, because the federal government's, you know, change in their or continuation, I should say, of this program, those are all available to all families, you know, regardless of economic need through December 31st at this point. Yep.
And so it does help and support the district by getting those lunches. I just want to really put it out there.
Yeah, I mean, it supports, really supports the families. I mean, I don't, I mean, it's not, it's not harming the district really, you know. There, we do have, you know, the costs of the food are covered. You know, anyway, it's, it's, folks shouldn't hesitate. Please do not hesitate to order meals in any way, shape, or form.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Great, thank you.
Seeing none, oh, no, may it taken.
Do they have to fill out a form to take a free lunch?
Oh, they do have to just, we have ordering online right now. And so that's, that's the, it's not a form like for eligibility at all. It's just in terms of the ordering system that we have. And we have instructions in English, Spanish, and Portuguese on how to do that. We've mailed those out at least once. They're available on our website. And we also, teachers are also helping out by checking with students in the morning. If students haven't ordered, they can order at that point as well through, you know, through their teacher.
Now, um, do we send the lunches home?
Yeah, they're all grab and go. So what happened is they, they're delivered these great big red bags. They're, you know, packed up during the school day by our food service workers at the school. Then they're delivered, then they're packed into these big red carry bags and they're all delivered to each classroom. And they're labeled with, you know, student name and that sort of thing. And they can, they're typically taking, you know, you could take a breakfast or a lunch or both, that sort of thing. And they're coming right to classrooms.
Well, do you feel that a child's being embarrassed taking it? Because I don't understand how we have the low numbers. And yet, when we did it during the summer, when there, when there was no school, or we did it during the time we were home for COVID, we had numerous people picking up the lunches. So are we not doing it correctly? Or are we not, should we not be putting it in the classrooms and watch everyone take it? Or say you can take it? There's got to be something because or some way. Because if we had so many children that the demand was high, that we did a breakfast and lunch during the COVID time, we were home those four months, and then we served kids during the summer. And yet I looked at the numbers and we're down, something's up.
Oh.
Something we're either not communicating it right. I know there's a lot of people at home, that I know. There's a lot of people at home, so it's different. But the children that are there or should we be saying to also, I don't know, give a couple on the bus and say to the bus driver that if she needs to, someone wants to take it home or something? Is there any way that we can reach out better?
Yeah, so so we're continuing, I don't know if that, we're continuing to reach out, absolutely. I think, I mean, the numbers here, I think I'm correct by this, is that there, we're comparing the numbers here to when kids were ordering food, like paying for food last year. Okay, when schools were fully in session. So it's not to the springtime, okay? The other piece, remember, is this is also being compared to when kids were, you know, in the full school day.
Okay.
Possible, I mean, likely, I should say, that because they're only going to school till 12 o'clock in three of the middle, in three of the elementary schools, that they're just having lunch at home possibly. So it's kind of hard to compare them at this, at this point. But you are right, we want to keep on communicating in multiple languages. Because I think part of this is, is families aren't aware of the opportunity right now. You know, that it, that it's actually possible to get these lunches.
I think because when I was, when I posted it on my website and I posted it on my personal site and I said, there's forms you can fill out. I think they, everyone says, well, that means I have to be income level. I think when they understood the forms, I think they're thinking income qualification forms, not figuring it, you have to. And so no one's looking at it again. I think maybe a nice friendly reminder of saying that there is no income qualification. The form is for you to pick a lunch.
Yeah, yeah, that, that, I think, I think that's right. There's confusion because when people hear free lunch, they think of the program. They don't think of everybody. So I think you're right about that. We'll continue to communicate, continue to make sure that people understands for all students, you know, no matter what. And like I said, more than last week, and so we're on upward upward trend and we got to keep on communicating. So that'll increase, definitely.
Can I tell you something? I got a text and it says, yes, my students are embarrassed. It's really sad. I tell them it's free to take it and they're embarrassed because everyone's watching.
Yeah, I think we.
We have to do a better way. We have to do it a better way. You know what? I'm going to be honest with you. When I was a young kid and it first happened and they gave you those lunch tickets, remember? Um, I was a kid who wanted one. And then when you get one when you're older, because you needed it, because your family needed it, you were embarrassed. You were all been in a different circumstances that, you know what? We have to find a better way. Because I just got three texts from parents and one teacher. Yes, my students are embarrassed. It's really sad. I tell them it's free, take it, and that's what embarrasses them. So I don't think we should say that it's free lunch or anything. I'll say there's a lunch going to be distributed to each child. If you choose not to take it, just leave it. You know what? Bring it, we'll bring it somewhere. We'll be able to distribute for the next day. But I really think that if we're going to do it that way, you're going to make it, just say, you know, if you're not going to bring your lunch, we'll distribute to one each one. And you know what? Lunches never go to waste.
Yeah.
If we're getting reimbursed until December 31st and they're not filling out the forms or they're not doing something, then give it to the teachers too. If there's no income qualification, doesn't say child, just give it to the teachers. You have teachers there that have to stay. And then don't forget, you don't have a cafeteria working. So you know what? If a child then says, no, I don't like it, I don't want it, whatever, give it to the teachers, it's not contaminated. Put it there, say, everyone takes a lunch if they want it. If they choose not to, have the teachers take it. They know what to do with it. We did summer programs. We did the CEDAR programs. We did it, I distributed them, I worked there. You know, we, I worked as a summer kid. We, we kids went there. We would, we would do the lunches and you know what? If it was paid by and everyone gets to get a lunch, then what's the big deal? What are we worried about here? Make the lunches, say everyone gets a lunch. If they don't, they'll eventually take them. They might not like them or whatever, but they'll eventually like something out of it. It's the same thing like the Meals on Wheels. Or you know what? You have teachers, you got plenty of paraprofessional teachers and everyone else is there. The teacher, lunches never go to waste.
Yeah, I, I hear you completely, Ms. Mayor. And I, and I, and I didn't respond to whether or not kids feel some stigma, okay? And and I'm not the one to judge that because, but, you know, I think you have to listen to teachers on this, okay? I would all, I would want to make sure, and I don't know this off the top of my head, you know, that we're abiding by the federal rules so we don't get in trouble for either wasting food or delivering food that hasn't been ordered to families. Because I just don't want us to get in that hot water. So but I hear you very clearly that we want to increase the number of meals we're serving.
Ben, I, we paid for lunches and I don't want to continue on this. You and I can discuss this after. But you and I paid for lunches that were not being paid and the taxpayers are picking it up because we said no child will go hungry. Then we gave them breakfast and I agreed. We never got reimbursed. Do you really think I give it two hoots what the government's going to say? I really don't. Because the fact is, there are children, right now, their parents have just told me, I have a text and I will show you, that are not eating and they need it. And the teachers know who need it and don't. I trust the teachers on that one. Ben, you and I are not in the classrooms and I hate to be sounding like a witch, but also your teachers are going to be there. The cafeteria is not open, the lounge is not made, you don't get the machines there. They're going to be there. You know what? I'll find out from the governor if we do 10 extra lunches, are we going to get in trouble? If, you know what, they're left over and I give them to my teachers, are we going to get in trouble? I will find that out and we will discuss this. But I think that, you know what? If you have Monday, 697 breakfast, 800 lunches distributed and stuff, and we're missing 50 kids, you know what? I'll pay for the damn 50 kids out of pocket as long as I know that everyone's going to get a lunch. Because the fact is, you know what? If a mother just called me and people just text me and teachers, then we're doing something. So we need, we need to trust the people who are there. And we're not. And I'm not putting anyone down, but I'm telling you right now, we'll do this after, we'll work with the teachers, like you said. You'll go talk to the teachers because they know their students and they know from prior, and I'll know that little kid. Look, they know the families. If you are in the same. If you're in the same school for five years, they saw them. They know these kids, and they'll know the difficulties in someone's heaven. That could be, I didn't, I did it at the hospital. Child care, mental health, all of that, Medicaid, everything else. It's hard. When you've been working, and then all of a sudden you stop. Remember, half of these peoples are no longer working. And the first pride that they have is asking for help. Because then we feel we failed. So trust me. If the parents are reaching out, because they know I have to do their health insurance, then they're reaching out. So we'll talk after. There's no reason that we have to broadcast this. Thank you.
I just want to be clear. Like, I completely agree with you. We need to make sure that every single family, every single child who wants or needs, you know, or wants a lunch or meal can get them. I totally agree with you on that. And we need to keep on communicating, work with our teachers to make sure they can order for students, if the students want it or need it. So I, I really think we're largely in agreement here. We need to keep on, you know, improving those numbers. So whoever wants a meal can get one. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Cathy.
Yeah, I think also it would be helpful to see, you know, obviously, after we have probably another full week of data at least, the numbers broken down by level. It would be nice to know, you know, does the 45% of students ordering lunch last year, obviously, it probably included high school students. And right now, high school students who are fully remote, right? They, they only have a half an hour or whatever it is in between. So I'm sure a lot of them are just eating at home and don't really have the opportunity or, or need to necessarily go, you know, across town or wherever they live. So I'd like to see, like, maybe elementary, how many students are actually in? Same with middle school and high school. So if we understand the numbers a little bit better, we can understand if there's, you know, how to better reach more families that would need, that would need. Or, you know, quite honestly, I think any parent would appreciate their kid having school lunch more often, so that they don't have to worry about making the lunch and, you know, keeping it interesting. Because sometimes the school lunch is certainly a great offering in terms of, you know, something kids really enjoy. So it would just be good to continue to look into the numbers.
Great. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. And we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is an update from the Building and Finance Subcommittee from the meeting of September 16th, 2020. Cathy.
Okay. So we met on September 16th, as you said. Melissa was the alternate, because Joel had some work obligations. So it was a little bit of a group effort on having a forum for the Building and Finance Subcommittee. The first item we talked about was administrative compensation. And, and we decided to table this because it, you know, because it would have a financial cost. So we want to understand what the total picture is for this fiscal year before we make any expense decisions like that. The second item, we got a report from Grant Harris on the cost of holding meetings, public meetings in person. And he seemed to come up with a pretty reasonable solution of equipment that would cost approximately $2,700, which would allow us to meet in person. It would also be equipment that can be portable and movable, depending where we have our meetings. So we received that report, and we also tabled any decision on that based upon the financial picture. We received a report from Adam Mayo for transportation. I think school had been just that one day. So I don't really want to give the report on one day, let alone the first day of school that he had given to us. Because there were obviously some hiccups. But as he said, kids got to school, kids got home. And, and they were ironing out some of the glitches and, and things like that. He also reported that they've been able to transport families that have a need for service. So even those within the two miles, which has been great, that they've been able to accommodate more families. We received a report on athletics, but I think we went over that in our meeting pretty much after our Building and Finance meeting for the school, the full school committee, when we discussed opening athletics for the fall. And then we received a long report about the expenses related to this current school year. And as we know, we've had to hire more staff. There's a lot of expenses related to having school this year. It is right for us to be educating our kids in school, but that does have additional costs. Thankfully, there are grants related to this, and we've used and allocated many contingency funds that we have in the school committee towards making sure this year works. We also discussed how this year is very fluid. And so what the picture is right now might be very different in three weeks. It might be very different. So we are going to keep a very close eye on that. And, and so we really didn't take any action. We received the report. We know we're tight on the finances, and we're going to do everything we can. We did, Jonathan, do you want me to make the motion now on the expenses?
Well, I, I was going to just say that Adam Mayo isn't in attendance. And, and if he has, if you'd like to update us on how transportation is going, maybe we should give him the opportunity.
Evening. You all hear me?
Yes, yes, thank you.
It's not a great connection, Adam. We're not sure. We can't hear, we can't hear you now.
We can't hear you now, right?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Um, so we have made some improvements since day one. Obviously, that was our goal. We are improving on times. We are hopefully reducing the number of parent pickups at some of our schools that we had concerns about. And we are still continuing to add students on a daily basis to the routes that have run. So we are improving on those. Some of our areas of concerns due to our timing of our buses leaving some of the schools, rather than leaving towards the end of a day, we're now leaving in the middle of a day. So traffic is a little bit heavier throughout the city. So we are working out some plans to get buses out and onto the road in a timely fashion. Again, we are on tight schedules this year, so our drivers are working to improve that system. We're also working with administration to make sure that we're able to get students on the correct buses. Making some slight changes is always difficult this first week, to make sure that we are spreading students out between buses. So we aren't overloading and only having the 26 capacity, meeting the dusty guidelines. So since day one, we have made quite a bit of improvements, but we still have a little ways to go. We are getting students two pathways as current. I was mentioned earlier, I am working with the Y, once they get their approval for their daycare, to start working with them to determine what we need to do. This week, we also started high school transportation. The numbers have not been real large, but the number of students that are attending is not large either. So our drivers are getting that pattern down, working with KDA in that route. So we have improved. We've got a lot of things to still work on, but we're slowly getting there.
Thank you, Adam. Does anybody have a question? Okay, seeing none. So keep up the good work and keep the buses rolling. We do have one action item that is coming out of BNF as a real assault of the concerns of, on the budget. And Cathy, I'll want to make the motion.
Yes. So as part of making sure we meet the budget, we, we have directed or agreed with the administration superintendent to reduce our supply budget. And the notion is to authorize this chief financial officer to reduce supplies and equipment budget by 15% for remote academy staffing costs. And I so move.
Second.
Okay. So this, this came about, out of our discussion about the, the stress put on to our budget through various things, but mostly about staffing the remote academy. So I, we will open it up for deliberations. Or if anybody has questions of the staff, I, maybe Gary is here. Maybe he could just explain it a little bit more.
Yes, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can. Before you go, let me just do a little preamble here. What, what this stated assets are done, do, and we're obligated to do, is offer, as I think most folks know, offer, you know, parallel school. It's fully remote, parallel schooling, that's fully remote. What that has resulted in in Gloucester is a remote learning academy at, I'll start with elementary. That is, that is essentially the size of our other schools. And then at, at the middle school, 130 students. And especially at elementary, the challenge there is, if you think about taking a few students out of a classroom, say you have a classroom of 20 students, and you take, you know, a few students from each, from a classroom across the district, say, say in, in fourth grade or third grade, you reduce those classes by, say, 20, sorry, by three students. So from 20 to 17, you still need that classroom teacher and the supports that, you know, that go into that classroom. But at the same time, you've created the need for another classroom teacher to teach the third grade students, say, at the remote learning academy. And while we've been able to, and so you, you have to, you know, add, essentially, you're adding staff. And so it's really crucial, folks, to know, and the school committee knows this, but the general public as well, is that that's the reason we're adding staff, is because we are, we really do need to have that remote learning academy fully staffed. We're moving towards that. We're having trouble hiring some folks. But as we have then, say, moved some of our existing staff into, to cover the remote learning academy, we have to then, you know, backfill. If we move a fifth grade teacher to the remote learning academy, those fifth graders of that classroom that that teacher left still need to be taught by a teacher. Okay? So in some ways, we've been able to move staff to fill that fifth grade position or that third grade position in, in the, it was a brick and mortar school. Sometimes we've had to hire someone. But you do need both, the classroom teacher at the elementary and the remote learning academy teacher at the elementary. You also need, because of the number of students, special educators at the remote learning academy, English language educator, and paraprofessionals, to make sure that that's fully staffed. We are essentially trying to approximate, and I mean just approximate, you know, the staffing of a school at the remote learning academy. Gary, you'll talk about the numbers here, but I think we're doing a great job of using fully grants that are available to us. But the one area and the contingencies that the school committee planned for. But then also do need to make a reduction, a small reduction, supplies and materials in order to make sure those students in the remote learning academy and the students of teachers who've come into the remote learning academy have teachers and have staff appropriately. Gary, can you give us some numbers in terms of the staff that we are hiring or have hired or need to replace because of our need to fully staff our remote learning academy across the district?
Sure. We're looking, the remote academy, we're staffing a net of seven additional teachers at the elementary, five additional teachers at the high school, and four additional teachers at the middle school. When you add up all the additional staff we're looking at, we're looking at about a $1.8 million. Some of that is going to be paid by grants. But keep in mind, most of the grants that we have end at December 30th, 2020. We do have one grant that goes all the way to the end of the year, but that is not, that's only 471,000. Also, we're looking at a variety of ways to pay for the additional costs. As Cathy has mentioned, we're looking at school contingency funds, some budget contingency funds, other grants, and we're looking at additional, or the salaries that have come in, actual salaries versus the budget. And we do have some savings there, as, as well as the, the supply cost, which is just a minimal amount of money, but it's, every bit helps to, when you put all these different sources together, that will help pay for the additional staff.
And I just want to remind people that there were positions in our budget that was passed that we did not fill. So that's helping to fund these salaries as well.
Exactly. So this, we think we'll be able to fund the additional staff, but it will put a, create the budget to be really tight for the end of the year, as well as for FY '22.
Okay, so the, the motion before us is to instruct the CFO to reduce the supply budget across the board for all schools by 15%. And this is, this is necessary to balance the budget at this point. So are there any more questions or any comments? Laura.
Just, just a question on, obviously, we need to do this, but what is the impact on reducing the budget for supplies at this time? I mean, have we had any feedback from administrators? Or where does that, where does, where does the, where do the things that are needed that come out of that? Where, where else can they come from?
Okay, to answer your question, the total effect will be $150,000. First, we, we're thinking of freezing the budget for supplies. And we got some feedback from the principals. And we found out they prefer to have, instead of freezing the budget, to have a reduc, a small reduction of 15%, where they can not be pressured to put in their purchase orders real quickly to beat the freeze. So we have worked with the principals and got some feedback. And of course, this is, they're not pleased to have their budgets reduced. But at this point, we think it's necessary and it's doable at this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'm going to call for roll call vote. Maria.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
Yes.
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Prince? Mayor Taken?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
And Ms. Wiesen?
Yes.
It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the rest of our action items. The next.
Just, just one second, Jonathan. I just want to mention that we did not get through some, some regular monthly items on the agenda. But the second piece was food service, which we knew we needed to spend more time on and have more information for Martha Jo to put together for us. So we're going to have an extra meeting in between before we would have our regular monthly meeting. So we still need to schedule that.
All right. So moving on to our other action items. We have two grants that we need to approve. And the first one's from the Gloucester Education Foundation grant in the amount of $39,500 to the O'Malley Middle Innovation Middle School Science Center. Two payments, $27,000 on September 2nd, which has gone by, and $12,500 on February 1st, 2021. And I so move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Could we have a roll call vote, Maria?
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
Yes.
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yeah.
Mayor Taken?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
And Ms. Wiesen?
Yes.
It carries unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item is the DESE. The next item is the DESE Massachusetts 21st Century Community Learning Grant in the amount of $119,213, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote, Maria.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yeah.
Mayor Taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
And Ms. Wiesen.
Yes.
It carries unanimously. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of student handbooks. Ben, how are we going to handle these, elementary, then middle school, then high school?
Yes.
Is that the way we want to do it? So we're going to have a little bit of a presentation first on each one?
Yeah, so Dr. Telenia Emmons here, just to sort of summarize for you. You have the documents in there. The red is what's been changed. She'll summarize for you sort of the nature of the changes. And then we'll go forward.
Good evening. So this year, we did not make a significant number of changes. Primarily, it was the names, Rich Sapphire to Ben Lummis, Dan Jewett took the place of Tammy Morgan, Adam Mayo took the place of Kathy Verga. We then did add COVID symptoms under the medical section of the handbook for the elementary. We also changed report card terms, the conference dates, and just added some highlights in sections around what specialist times would look like during this pandemic time. And we added the harassment policy that I know that may change again as it is at subcommittee for you at this point. But those are, it was a very small year for changes at the elementary level.
Any questions? Laura.
I believe this was in the elementary handbook, and just, just a question about a calendar issue. So there, there was a, I believe it was in there that it was about half days. Is that? Was that?
Do you know what page? I'm sorry.
I have to go back. It's, I just keep scrolling through. It was towards the beginning. Really, the question is just, I'm not finding it now. There was something about the first dates of the, the dates of the half days this year. And my question was, in the hybrid model, what does a half day mean?
So that is something we're still looking at right now. What we have talked about with Adam is that the elementary for sure, that for now, as long as we can, we will not be shortening our four hour day.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion to accept the elementary school handbook? For. You want?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote, Maria.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yeah.
Mayor Taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
And Ms. Wiesen.
Yes.
It carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And, and we'll move on to the, the middle, the element, the middle school handbook, O'Malley Innovation Middle School.
Lynn. Nice to see you.
Hi.
The, we did, we did a few things with the middle school handbook this year. Not extensive changes as much as reorganization. So I'll go through a few things. What I, what I tried to do as I went through was, was bring categories together, and I'll talk about them as I go through. So the first changes, I added a welcome from the principal and a description of the O'Malley Sales Program on page eight. Those are items that were in our student assignment book, which we didn't distribute or publish this year, and they were lacking from the handbook, so I added those. The acceptable dress section has just simple face covering language added on to the other items that are part of the acceptable dress list. It's the same language that is posted on the GPS website. With attendance, we added language, we had a paragraph narrative that talked about appropriate excused absences. The format was, you know, difficult to really see. So again, I took the language from the policy that, from the six to 12 policy that explicitly outlines excused absences. There was a section on unexcused already in there. Communication, there were no changes to communication, but I reorganized a few things. There was a section on email, a section on the website, a section on reporting, report card grades, things like that, that all really should have been consolidated in one area of the handbook. So they're all brought together. That was page 16. Similarly, with conduct and progressive discipline, we had a conduct exception, a code of conduct section, alcohol and tobacco slash vaping, all in different areas in the handbook. So these are all brought together under conduct and progressive discipline on pages 17 to 23. No, no changes in the content there either. Page 24, we did not have anything about document translation in our handbook. So I added the same language that elementary has in theirs. 25, on page 25, food services, again, was cafeteria and had some information in different places. I changed that to include the information about how food services is working this year in terms of grab and go lunch and that kind of thing. There is what appears to be a typo in there, if you notice it. The, the link on Meal Magic has O'Malley spelled with two L's. And I can't do anything about that because it's the link. So know that that is, I'm aware of it, but it's, it's there. It's part of the link. The illness section, which was previously illness and injury and very brief, was updated to include return to school after illness information. Again, similar to the elementary and high school handbooks, and then COVID information that specifically talks about the options people have if their kids are sick and what they need to do to return them to school. On page 30, the school hours were changed to, for this year. 32 has transportation brought together with bus behavior and bus changes and the security cameras. Again, they were in different places in the handbook. So that's all together, no content changes there, though. Users fee on page 34 was reorganized into a table, so it was more readable. And O'Malley Academy wasn't mentioned previously, so that's added on as a no cost item. The, the real addition is information about GPS online services and Chromebook use. We've had several documents that have been used over previous years. One of them was the online learning services that was developed in the spring specifically for remote learning. So that's the first part of that section, starting on page 37. And then there are a couple of items that follow that. Part two and part three are Chromebook use guidelines and a student contract that we've used with the eighth grade, eighth grade one to one since before my time. So I felt that it, you know, given that we're one to one as a school, and it's something that's been in place and used with kids, it makes sense to have it in the handbook for, for easy reference to them. And then lastly, the Title IX and civil rights grievance procedures in the policy section were updated in accordance with, accordance with law changes and as we did in the school committee policy. That's it.
Any questions? Samantha.
This is really a question for everybody. Did we or should we, anything in the student handbooks about the flu changes in relation to being required to get it this year?
We do not, I do not believe we have any in them. That's a good question. I think we could have probably, need to talk to nurses about that to see, and also Karen Carroll about that, but I think that might make sense.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We can always send out an addenda. It's, it's, it is important that these get out now that the students are in school. So it's a good point, though. I mean, they are required and.
I mean, Jonathan, the immunization piece of it does say all required immunizations. So I think that we're likely covered there, but I, I didn't know if we needed to just elaborate a little bit more about the, about the flu shot.
Okay.
And either, and either way, we definitely need to communicate through, through this means, but also any other additional means and any means we can about, about the change and about the need, the importance, and also about the availability.
Laura.
Um, so this may or may not be something that would be appropriate in this kind of a document, but are we, do we want to say anything about sort of large gatherings outside of schools or the kinds of, you know, sort of things that go against the governor's orders right now? You know, it, what you were saying, like all, it's all of us, all in, you know, keep it up, we're all in. This may not be an appropriate document for that, but maybe if, if, just raising whether we want to raise some sort of an expectation that families or students are following the current advisories on gatherings, et cetera.
Yeah, I haven't thought about that. I mean, off the top of my head, I mean, this is more of a in school thing as opposed to outside of school thing. I will say this, though, that, I mean, literally tomorrow, I'll be sending out a message to all families about that exact, that exact notion of, you know, please no parties, and that means birthday party for young kids or a high school party for those kids, you know? And so I think the messaging is super important for all of us on this to remind people as much as possible, we should remind them during these meetings, in emails, on Facebook, you know, principals and their communication. So I think it's a, it's a, in terms of communicating that needs, it's very important. I wouldn't think it's a, it would fit necessarily in the, in these.
Okay, that makes sense. Yeah, thank you.
Just want to let you know, we got it. We're in the gray. Hooray.
That's good news. Go Gloucester. Keep it up. Keep us in. Jonathan, you're muted. Looks like you're talking.
Yeah, I was talking to myself, apparently. Are there any other questions before we make the motion? Seeing none, we'd like to make a motion on to accept the O'Malley Innovation Middle School Handbook.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yeah.
Mayor Taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
And Ms. Wiesen.
Yes.
It carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to the, the high school yearbook, yearbook handbook.
Thank you. So similar to the other levels, our primary changes for this year have to do with current situations and some changes in law. So we too have added the COVID symptoms check and so on. And for us, we put that right into our attendance policy. At the high school level, as Ben mentioned earlier, we do have an, have an attendance failure policy that we're looking to suspend for this year because of the, just the difficulties that many of our families have with documentation related to failing classes as a result of accumulating absences. And we don't want to send any mixed messages this year about folks staying home when they're sick. We're not just setting that aside, though, but I met today with Gail Avery, our attendance officer, about ways that we can use the guidance from Attendance Works, right? You'll have been familiar with that from your participation in that. They have some effective COVID specific practices for maximizing attendance while also encouraging people to stay home. And since they're doing that on a much larger scale than just Gloucester, we'll, we'll be looking to them for some guidance about how we can maximize attendance while still encouraging people to stay home when they're sick. We have added the discrimination and the harassment policy, the Title IX changes in civil rights as well, and have brought that into line with our discrimination and harassment procedures that, that were already part of our handbook. We've used gender neutral language throughout our handbook, so we've made a comprehensive review to make those changes. Our racial equity and inclusion team also did a review of the handbook and made some slight modifications to our handbook, including principle two, showing respect for others, making sure we're using the civil rights categories consistently in all areas that it applies throughout the handbook, and finally adding culturally responsive teaching as one of our principles and values near the beginning of the document. So that's, oh, and the safe, sorry, I skipped over the face coverings and adding that into the, into the handbook as well, your recently approved face coverings policy. That covers it for the high school.
Any questions? You must have covered it well, James. There's no questions. Seeing no questions, do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the 2020, 2021 student handbook for Gloucester High School.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yeah.
Mayor Taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
And Ms. Wiesen.
Yes.
It carries, it carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thanks, James.
Thank you.
Okay. We will move on in the agenda. I don't know whether everybody's just tired or, but we're getting right through this. Messages, School Building Authority project update. Melissa already mentioned that the city council last night voted eight to one to approve the, the bond issue, which would pay for, which would pay for, should the, the debt exclusion pass. It would then kick in and pay for the rebuilding of softball fields at, at Green Street. It would pay for the swing space and any renovations needed. And it would pay for the demolition and the restoration of parklands at East Gloucester School. This is really a very good thing that the city has, has sort of guaranteed that these projects will be included in the, in the overall package should the debt exclusion pass. But they're not part of the, the money that would be asked for in the debt exclusion. They would be financed through the, through the city's general fund. So that's another step forward. The, the city council on next Tuesday will be having a public hearing and voting on the transfer of the property, which is crucial to the moving this project forward. So Joel, you have a question or a comment?
My question is relating to the email that I'd sent earlier this week, just to kind of put on the radar, thinking about, you know, I'm confused as to whether decisions being made about swing space and being made about, you know, at what point we consolidate the school populations? Is it when the new school opens? Is it when veterans closes? Are those, are either both or none of those decisions, school committee? Are either both, none of the building committee? Where's the division line between who makes the call for swinging space versus the other stuff?
Well, it's, it's certainly not the building committee's purview. Well, it's, it's certainly not the building committee's purview to describe to the school department how to merge students. I mean, it's, it's their purview to make sure that, that there's a plan in place and, and, you know, the kids are going to be somewhere. So it's, it's, it would come from the, the administration would have to come up with a plan to present to the, to the school committee. Or they could, the school committee could make a recommendation for the, the administration to look into how something might be done. But that's my, that's, I think how it would proceed. I, you know, the, you know, there's some valid points here. These kids are going to be merged, but there's a lot more, you know, I think to some extent, we're trying to minimize the amount of work and, and stress that we're putting on the community too, but.
Sure. What about the decision just of the, the physical location of the swing space? Is that school committee or is that building committee?
Once again, it's, it is, it's not the building committees. It's not the building committees.
So then.
I mean, it's the building committees, as I said, responsibility to make sure that there is swing space, but it isn't their, their job to, and, and if the, if the recommendation is to move, to go to the, to St. Anne's or to the high school or to, and there were building issues needed to be, you know, then that might come under the building committee, but not that choice, not, not the decision as to where.
So the building committee can essentially only put us on a path that will require swing space, but the school committee will decide where that swing space will be. And then if there are renovation issues with whatever the state's chosen, it gets kicked back over to the building committee?
Yeah, if, if, if there were renovation issues that were, were in the, within the realm of needing a building committee, I mean, there's, there's a limit. I forget what it was. It used to be $100,000, but I think it's a lot more than that now. Then it would, it would fall to the building committee to not, just to oversee the, the construction.
So then I suppose the next question would be timing for us to begin discussion and or make a decision. Do we wait to see whether or not the debt exclusion overhead passes and whether we're moving forward? Do we need to begin discussing the, you know, the swing space now so that prior to the, the vote, you know, we have a plan in place as if the vote goes through? Here's the full plan where the kids will go for two years, what it'll look like. I'm just curious when we should make that decision.
So if I can chime in, Jonathan.
Sure.
Yeah, so I think, I think the building committee is overdue for a meeting. Okay. And part of that meeting, I would suggest anyway, would be time, looking at timeline very closely and, and nailing down, you know, some of the questions you're raising. And, and, you know, in terms of timeline, one of the, one of the issues on timeline is just what you're raising is, you know, when preparing for, you know, moving into swing space and whatever swing space is identified, preparing that swing space. Because, you know, literally, if all goes as, as I hope, and I think many people in the community hope, and the vote passes on November 3rd, then, you know, come June 25th or so, you know, we got to move, basically, you know, that move isn't, isn't something that happens in August. It happens as soon as, as soon as we can. So I think the building committee needs to really, you know, ramp up the timeline, make sure we're on board with the timeline. From that, you know, then we start doing the planning about that, with them about, with the OPM or others on, you know, swing space and then present to you what's going to be happening. And, and then get, you know, input and any suggestions or changes for that. But we have to work within the budget. We have to work in terms of timeframe. And I think it's, it's, it makes sense to me for the, for the, for the building committee to, you know, ramp this up, basically.
Sorry.
Okay, Mayor Taken wants to weigh in.
What did you do with West Parish?
What do you mean, what did we do?
Who made the decision? Who made the decision in the first place to go to St. Anne's?
My recall, I mean, we could look at minutes, but I believe it was an assessment by the building committee of, I think the two choices were West Parish, were St. Anne's, and then there was a business on Condolin Road. And it was determined that the Condolin Road was not feasible or, or very expensive to make it work. So my, I don't recall it being in a, a big discussion because St. Anne's was viable and and within what, you know, what the transition space, I think, you know, guess of cost would be. So I really don't remember it coming back to the school committee for, for that. That's not to say we can't ask the questions and see if there's other alternatives. But Melissa, do you remember us having that discussion?
I do. And I, we, we chose St. Anne's only because there was no other option, you know, and because the Condolin Road one fell through. But the committee discussed it, and I have to believe the committee is the one that weighs in on it, not the building committee. Because we're in charge of the school, it's not the building committee. Yeah, in charge of the building committee, it's the project, but my recollection is that we agreed on St. Anne's and discussed it and it was the end result because there was no other viable option.
Yeah, I, I, I think Melissa's right. What my recollection is, is the building committee made a recommendation. And the recommendation was to move, was it, I'm trying to remember exactly what we did. We, we moved, it wasn't the whole school that went.
K four.
It was, it was K four that went, but the fifth grade went to O'Malley and the, the two, or I can't remember whether one or two self-contained classes went to Beaman with new modules. And I know the school committee, you know, approved all of that.
We're going to work together, whether it's the school committee, subcommittee, or the mayor, we're going to work together. If, I had an open door policy transparency, we left it up. You know what? We're going to, Joel, I got your suggestions, and you're right, we need to look at these things. We said that before when Jim and I were first interim mayor and a CAO. We asked what are our options? Remember, we asked when we got the money from Fuller that we're going to look at some of the plans and what it was to actually look at O'Malley. If we're going to put money, let's put in our own buildings and schools first and what we could do before we wanted to put the administration, remember? So we'll look at it. You know what? Come November 3rd, come November 4th, Joel, stay on top of it, stay on top of me, and we'll look at them. We'll have to look at everything. And St. Anne's might not be, you know, there. We don't know. You don't know what's going on. I'm not going to sit there and put, though, $2 million in someone else's school and, and then keep, and paying rent on top of that, you know? We did that once and I'm getting, last night, almost a 211C to put $4.2 million into taking down a school to make it a wonderful park, to actually put in a beautiful state-of-the-art baseball field, actually two, and it could be up to $4 million. We're not saying it is. And then a swing space that, you know, some money for swing space, whereas nobody even knows that we put $1.2 million into St. Anne's for just two years, and it wasn't even ours. And we had to pay rent on top of that at $200,000 each year, which nobody seemed to complain about. But yet now at 4.2, I almost lost grants and this and that. So you know what, people? Let me tell you something. We'll work together. We'll figure it out what's best for our children. And that's what, that's what, the most important things. It's not going to be negative of mine or this or back or whatever it's going to be. Where can we put these children? How long they're going to have to be there? What it's going to be and what we can do. And that's what we're all going to do together. Because I don't want to hear from five, six, seven years along and say that bitch that was made this, because it's not happening. We're going to work together.
Okay, so as Ben said, I do believe that we'll probably schedule a building committee meeting for next week. There's a lot of updating that needs to be done. We also need to move forward with these, these discussions. If there are viable alternatives, we need to be talking about them right now. Because November 3rd is right around the corner. And at that point, we're going to have to, to jump quickly as to getting someplace ready to go. I mean, even no matter where we go, there's going to take some.
Exactly.
Planning and preparation.
I don't want to wait like we did with the administration and the, where we're going to put the preschool, and we had to wait and we had our, we were choked. We're going to do this. We want to do it right, and we're going to make sure that it's done right.
Okay. Joel, you still have your hand up? You want to?
Yeah. Yes. So again, just to make sure I understand the steps here, the building committee will convene, confirm a timeline, then would it make sense for this to go on, you know? I'm trying, I'm trying to, this meeting probably needs to go to B and I don't know, probably needs to go to programs and come back to the full community recommendations. But I don't know how we get to the point where we have, you know, budgetary implications for our choices and programmatic implications for our choices until we identify those choices. And that would seem to be on us, not the building committee, to identify what we want to do with our students for two years. The building committee's already kind of told us, you need to find somewhere for your, for your students to go for two years, starting hopefully June 25th, use Ben's number. And then when it'd be on us to say, okay, for those two years, what do we want to do with them? And only if our choice has a construction implication, we go back to the building committee. So would it make sense to try and give you some subcommittee agendas? And if so, how would we be getting the data we would need to have a discussion?
I, I think that the way it should go, and this is just my thoughts, it isn't written in stone by any means, is that program should have a discussion about what the, what the options might be as far as placing the students for the two, for the two years that we're going to not have the Veterans Memorial School to house the students. And then they should make a recommendation and then BNF should determine what, what information they need to determine what the costs are and, and go about procuring that information. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
So anything else on the new school?
No, that's perfect.
One last thing, I do appreciate the, the positivity here in terms of planning ahead and moving forward. But there is a gigantic hurdle that we still all have to meet come November 3rd. And so I do want to impress upon all of you and the, you know, that we have a lot of work to do to to make sure information gets out there and people have the information they need so they can make a choice that supports a school. So there's still a lot of work to do before November 3rd or, or Mr. Favaza, yours and other concerns won't, won't, we won't have to spend much time on them. So still a lot of work to do on that, though.
Okay. Joel, you still have your hand up?
I'm sorry. So that's a good point. I'd be interested to hear input from the other committee members, whether, you know, whether it makes sense to expend the time and effort trying to begin solving this problem so that the voters have theoretically more, they may have a definite answer, but have a more clear picture as to what our plans are. Or do we think that it's, you know, whether we determine it now or after the vote won't really impact the result of the vote? And so maybe we should just wait until we know if we're moving forward. I'm just curious to what the rest of the committee thinks as far as whether it's helpful for the vote or not helpful for the vote.
Well, for one thing, any, any monies that would be required to say, determine, they haven't really determined what work needs to be done if we were to go to St. Anne's or if we were to go to another site. And those monies don't come available until November 3rd. Right? Because that's when, that's, although the loan order was passed last night, it, it's conditional upon the, the, the debt exclusion vote. So Melissa, you you have your hand up?
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to respond to Joel. So the, I'm just trying to figure this out, trying to think it through in my head. So the building committee has or has not identified swing spaces other than St. Anne's?
The building committee did not, you know, they just needed to have, have something covered. You know, they had to have some, something to recommend. They didn't investigate all options. They just said, well, we could go to St. Anne's and if we went to St. Anne's, what do you think it might cost? That's all we know. Is it available? They, they found, we, we found out if it was available and we did a walkthrough, which, you know, really just gave us a general sense. So the approach of the, the building committee is that, okay, this, there's something. We've, we've got something, we, you know, this is not going to be the deal breaker. We, we can't do this whole project because we don't have any place to put the kids. That, that was their concern.
So if I remember correctly, with West Parish, the building committee gave, identified several places. And then the city, the city got involved because there was an expense. And I remember Jim Dastino working diligently to negotiate a deal at St. Anne's after we realized Condolin Road, the expense was too much. So it seems to me, while I believe this should be discussed at program and BNF at some point, but it seems to me the building committee should be identifying options and giving those options to the school committee, not just identifying one option and saying we did our job, but maybe look into other options, because you have a, a lot of resources on your committee, more so than the school committee does. If this gets referred to program, program's going to be reaching out to the same people that are on the building committee to find out answers and costs and things like that. So it seems to me that some information should come from the building committee as soon as possible to the school committee, and then the school committee can consider.
Okay. I think.
That's how I see it happening, because I think it's going to be a slower process for the school committee to try to figure it out. When before, we relied on the building committee.
I think it would go to program, not to be talking about where the schools might be or, or what the buildings would look like, but to decide whether they want to move all of the students from, you know, like what happened is.
Can I call point of order? Where we're supposed to do handbooks. Our agenda didn't have this on. Are people going to complain? We're talking about this without letting the public know, and then we're saying we're doing things in no transparency? Because a lot of parents are saying that, well, I came for the handbooks, I came for this and, and the superintendent's report. And we're talking about swing space here and there and everything else. And I just got complaints saying it wasn't on the agenda or outside what it came on. Can we do it for the next one?
It's on the agenda.
It is on the agenda.
Okay, well, I'll let them know then, because I'm getting the crap. Thank you.
There's a school building authority project update and the handbooks are done. And if, when we finish this discussion, unless somebody has some new business they'd like to bring up, then we're going to go into executive session to discuss negotiations. I mean, that's, that's all that's left to do. So this is an appropriate discussion to be having under this title and, you know, so.
All right, Jonathan, I could chime in. I might be able to add just a little clarity in the process. I mean, really, in terms of Joel's question on what to do here, it's, it's really a timing issue. And we have to lean on the OPM there, because in order to get the things in place, we need to move to swing space, you know, at the end of June. You know, options have to be identified. I, there's going to have to be a public procurement process where you typically are putting out an RF, I think RFQ or RFR, you know, for people, you know, for available spaces. That's done, you know, with the city, obviously, not the school committee, you know, working with the city. But, but really in terms of the timing on this, we have to lean on the, on the OPM in terms of telling us like, when do we have to have that proposal out? When do we need to make a decision in terms of the swing space? What do we have to do in identifying what, what, what has to be changed in the swing space or anything? You know, that timing, and I, and this is why I'm urging us to, as you said, to have a building committee meeting, sort of determines what, when we do it. And, and that timing, we got to lean on the OPM to guide us on when to start, you know, focusing on this, which I think is going to be very soon, honestly.
Yes, I, I, I agree, but I think it is the school committee's purview to instruct the building committee to say, we want to look at other options, you know, or we want to look at. committee to say, we want to look at other options, you know, or we want to look at options where we keep our kids in our existing building somehow, and then let them try to figure out how, you know, what, what that might work, might be. Samantha, you have your hand up, thank you.
I think Ben just clarified this, but, you know, I was going to respond to Joel saying that I think regardless, the conversation should happen sooner rather than later, but I wasn't sure if it should go back to the building committee and encourage the building committee to meet soon, or if it should go right to programs. So I think Ben clarified that, it sounds more like the building committee should meet sooner rather than later, if that's what you were saying.
Like I say, we'll, we'll schedule a building committee meeting for next week, probably Thursday.
Thank you.
And, you know, and I, if, if program is meeting, there's no reason they couldn't have a discussion about the, what the alternatives might be from putting all the, all the veterans' kids into St. Anne's, whether there, there's other viable alternatives that should be explored, if you want to split up the kids somehow, or do you want to merge the kids? You know, those kind of things. Okay? Anything more on this? Melissa, you still have your hand up, you?
No, well, I just wanted to say, you know, we are in a pandemic, and we really don't know when it's going to be over either, so space is, is a good thing to have too, you know? I mean, I don't want to come out with an outcome where we think we're going to put all the kids in a school that we already have, and then find out we still need space for next year because we're still in a pandemic, because we just don't know the end of the story yet.
Okay, well, that's, those are the things that need to be looked at and considered. All right? So we are going to be going into executive session for, to discuss bargaining with the GTA and with GATE. So the motion to meet an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for the following purpose: As an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and to return into open session only to adjourn. And I so move.
Just, I, I just want to understand what I'm supposed to do here, because I should be a part of this for GATE, but I need to recuse myself for the teachers. Yay.
Yay, that's a hard one. You got to go like this, talking about teachers, okay?
Do you, do you want to just do one at a time and text me, or?
We could, couldn't she be in the meeting and just shut her camera and her, yeah, then her microphone off and then?
Yeah.
Yeah, she can't, just can't deliberate, I mean, she can be there, she's entitled to the information, she just can't deliberate on any issues.
Okay, so you can be there, just, and you can't, you know, you got to turn your camera off, so you, you know, if you look cross-eyed at us when we say something, we're not affected by it.
And should I tell the community, so I can recuse myself due to a conflict of interest? In relation to?
You should, you should make that statement before we go into executive session.
Thank you.
All right. I think I made the motion, we got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
Chairman Poe.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yeah.
Mayor Taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
And Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Okay, it carries unanimously, we'll be going into executive session, we will return to public session only to adjourn. So thank you very much to everybody who tuned in tonight, and we'll see you later, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, yes.
Thank you. Hi.
Maria, roll call?
Joel.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Safaia.
Yes.
Yes.
And Laura.
Yes. Good night, everybody.
Good night.